Okay, and we'll call, we are all here. So let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have a couple of little, you have a little printed paper here that has some additions to the agenda. So if we look at nine C, we have an additional fundraiser that we will talk about. And then under 10B, we have two additional donations to accept. Alright, does anybody have any other changes to the agenda? Okay, so I will accept a motion for, to approve the changes to the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the changes.
Thank you, and second?
Second.
We vote that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, and so then, looking over the agenda. Ever had a chance to look at that? So I will accept a motion for the approval of the agenda.
I'll make the approval of the agenda.
Second? Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Any public input? Nope, okay. So recognition of good things. Thank you to all the staff for working tirelessly over the summer months. Your efforts and diligence are noted and appreciated. And congratulations to Carrie Olson for being named Educator of the Year for the Austin Rotary Club. Two hundred congratulations. Alright, and then we're gonna go straight to Erin, Principal's report.
Um, sorry, um, I'd like to thank the school board members and the staff for the support with that signal I'm on.
Okay, thank you. Alright, thanks.
Not a lot here via July. August, I'll ramp it up a little bit, give you much more information, but just handbooks, which you guys have been able to read for the first reading, just a list of what we've worked on this summer to review. Reminder, bowling presentation, August 29th. During the day will be teacher presentation workshop, and there'll be a parent presentation in the evening. And they will also, this is the same company and person that has assisted over the years with writing our current bowling policy. So they will review that and assist us with any changes or updates if we need to do that as well. Responsibility Center of Discipline, Larry Thompson, will be here October 23rd. I think it's the Monday of MVA. And so now, we're going on year five, I believe. Four or five, I'll check, we had COVID threw us off a little bit in the middle of starting this, but all the staff have been trained over the years and now, and this year, I will be bringing all of our district employees and have it presented to everybody and have everyone trained in RCD, from bus drivers to the kitchen staff, all of that stuff, so. Everybody will be trained with RCD in our building, so. New, something exciting, we're getting new student desks and chairs. So that'll be, they'll be delivered on the 26th. And then when they deliver it, what they'll do is they'll put it in the small gym, and then a few days later, they'll send a team out to assemble it and put it in the classrooms for us. So hopefully by first week of August, all the classrooms will have their new desks and chairs. And that's K through 12, so everybody, so. That's pretty cool. So, and then, we are trying to make some room because we, you know, we will, we still will keep some of our good stuff. So we are gonna do like a rummage sale, furniture sale here this Friday, out in the playground, the flyers have been sent out, I'll send a reminder, noon to five. We're gonna try to clean out that old shed here by the playground, the stuff from the bus garage, and any old desks that we feel are, that we don't want to hold on to anymore. And then the stuff that we don't have room, that we don't sell or don't have room for, we will get a dumpster from Iron and Metal and see if we can get any money from Iron and Metal for any of those things. So that's kind of our plan with the old furniture and stuff.
And you're just, I'm just double checking the funding for the new equipment came from our ESTER grant from, was that federal money then? Yes.
Yeah. So that's kinda, kinda it here, ramping up the summer. So August, like I said, you'll start getting more into the new school year stuff coming up here in August and stuff, as teachers come back and schedules and bell schedules and all the announcements I send out, stuff like that.
Go ahead. Does anybody have any questions for Erin? Okay, thank you. And then we'll go right to our superintendent's report.
Alright, bet, okay, quite a few things tonight. Just reiterating what we talked about earlier. Congratulations to Carrie Olson, Educator of the Year for the Austin Rotary, that's a big deal, considering all the schools that are part of that, you know, in Mallard County, so good for her. Uh, let's see, early August, I'd say August 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 4th, something like that. Every year I send off a pretty lengthy email. I know most of my emails are lengthy as Pat was commenting on. This one's even more lengthy. But just to welcome everybody back, talk a little bit about our communication avenues, maybe some calendar information, security, safety, things like that. So that goes out in kind of a mass email. Oh, I'll include some felt in service information on there too, and you'll all be included in that, so look for that. Let's see, world's best workforce people, that would be Ange Kyle. Yep, okay, so expect an email here probably in September for a November meeting. We're trying to kind of keep with that same pace, so look for that, that will be coming. Our first grade numbers, I want to bring this up too. As you recall, I sent you an email here, I think it was last week. We are currently hovering around that 24, 25 within the classroom. We're really, really gonna be looking at that number here now in the next few days. If it would come about where we need to come forward to the board, I will first give you data, but come to the board if we need to split something or whatever, but keep it in the back of your head right now, that's a pretty large number. We'll see what we need to do, but I'll make sure you guys get the data right away on that. I did send you also that our non-affiliated handbook needs to be looked at here coming up, I would say within the next year. We definitely want to get done with our teachers contract before even talking about this, but I did send it to you in the email. If you'd like the hard copy of it, just let me know, I'll make a copy of that for you too. Oh, let's see. Oh, so we've been talking, Erin and Mr. Carrier and I, we have a, this is a great kind of problem to have. We have a lot of trophies, a lot of successes that have happened in this district, but we don't have room to display this. And so we're kind of at the point of, this is getting to be too much, and it's getting kind of messy, and you can't see the trophies anyway if they're in the case. So we're kind of getting to the point where we'd like to remove some, and we're still gonna store them, we're not getting rid of them or anything like that, not putting a rubber sale for trophies. We'd let you know if we did that. But, but we, we kind of are looking at a cutoff date of 1990 and above to display right now. The rest we'd house. If there's an argument with that, we're more than willing to talk about it and what have you, but right now, it's just really, really messy in the house. Come on, right? See, I think it'd be the 1990s day for you and me, so that's why. So anyway, if, if you're seeing that we're making some changes, we do, we just wanna, you know, paint the trophy cases, get rid of some of the old stuff, and just, you know, house it in a box for a little bit. But yeah, if there's any kickback, please send it our way. We have no problem talking to people and we can make adjustments too. But we want you to be the first to know that we're doing that. Some really cool news. Tanya, our preschool teacher, wrote a grant, and it's, it's through the SRTS Boost Grant, and she received an award. And it's for $5,500 towards the purchase of bicycles for our students. So I have to fill out a form and make sure we follow the grant. You can plan to approve it in August, I'll come forward to recommend it, but we just found out, I want to say yesterday? Yesterday or Sunday that she received the grant. So yes, it's Safe Routes to School Program for Boost Implementation Funding. Cruising Cardinals is what we're calling it. And so, yeah, so I'll give you more information and have handouts for you and stuff in August. But yeah, we just found out the good news and gotta fill out some forms. And I'll need your official approval in August for that.
Will this be for like rental or will it be for like worship?
Yeah, like class, like five classes?
For fire?
Could use them, if they want to do a bike unit.
I mean, we'll own them as a school.
No.
That's what I was going to say.
So once again, the kind of this whole furniture getting rid of, we also, we need to find a place to storage.
Yeah.
We're planning like 25 bikes, so we're gonna find that too. But she has to run, she has to run a bike rodeo. There's some stipulations that's due, so there'll be a bike rodeo, some bike safety to go along with this. And then the fire teachers, I'm aware that they could use them for like bicycle units and stuff.
That's awesome, that's cool. I know, we were pretty excited to hear about that.
Eventually Erin's gonna be coming forward with our MCA data. It's still embargoed right now, and so we can't talk much to you about it, but he has done his due diligence and really, really started digging deep into where our weak spots are, but also where we're gaining speed and strength. And so he'll be coming forward as he does every year to talk to you guys about that too. Him and I haven't even talked about it yet, so, but we'll get there. I want to talk a little bit about, a question was raised at last month's meeting about our 320,000, it was a $320,000 question. What it was, was basically, in a nutshell, an audit misrewrite is what it was. So basically, the numbers were placed in the wrong spot. We take our numbers from SMART, and the auditor took it from somewhere else. And the, the numbers are fine, it was just placed in the wrong spot. And so you will see in our audits coming up this, you know, this fall, early winter, I'll make sure that's talked about there too, so don't be alarmed with that. But I want to make sure you guys got that info right away. Thanks to Sharon too, she kept digging deeper into like, wait a minute, this is funny. And so, yeah, it was a great question, I can't remember who asked it, but it was a really great question, so thank you for that. Otherwise, I believe, for me, and I'll, I'll talk about other stuff as we get to the agenda, but that's my report for tonight, so thank you.
Any questions for our superintendent tonight? Okay, thank you. Alright, consent agenda. We had the school board meeting minutes, treasures reports, budget summary, student activity funds.
Deb, you could approve everything except for the June Treasurers Report, bank reconciliation.
Okay. So we'll just take that out?
Yep, so that's fine.
Mister can take out number two, the June Treasurers Report and Bank Reconciliation.
But I can give you the bank balance.
Okay.
You'd like to know the bank balance right now? So that you have that. So in checking, we have, as of June 30th, there is $82,222.23. Investment savings is $2,156,023.78 for a total of $2,238,246.1. And can I just, I just want to make a brief comment. So the reason that you don't have your Treasurers Report in front of you is because I don't, I did not have enough time to do it in its entirety accurately because of a transition. There's some pieces that I still have to get to connect, and I'd rather get that done before I do that. And as well, this balance for this Treasurers Report is going to change quite a bit, even after I give it to you, because there will be many adjustments that have to be made for the audit. And I will say, for instance, now the furniture that we're purchasing from ESTER Dollars is coming out of the 24 funds, but there's many items in 2023 that will come from ESTER Dollars. And those amounts still have to be allocated for or expended correctly for, in the 23 expenses. So they may or may not be already in existence there, so they may be like have to be pulled in. So what I'm trying to say is, bottom line is, getting ready for the fiscal year end, taking that picture for June 30th, those numbers will change. So even if you approved them today, they would change. They'll change before we go to bed, pretty much, because, because of all of those audit adjustments being changed. So I, but nevertheless, I apologize for you not having a report in front of you, but know that your financial situation is solid with those bank accounts. Those, those are accurate and those are solid. So those reports will be forthcoming to you, and then they will adjust until we get to the audit, which happens in September. But we're already starting the work with the audit, so. Does anybody have any questions on that? Because I don't want you to feel...
That's, that's typical anyway, adjustments getting me like that every year, so that's normal.
So, yeah, it's normal. I apologize you not having a report in front of you.
Good reason for it, so let's. Okay, so when, when we're doing the approval of the consent agenda, we'll be taking out that, number two, and we'll be... And then for fundraisers, the LO Student Council wants to do homecoming shirts, haunted trails, candy cane sales, Valentine's sale, hat passes, pennies for patients, and all these throughout the school year of 2023 and 2024. And they have done these activities previously, and they just kind of want to get an approval for all of it to happen throughout the school year. And then the football fundraiser is Sweets fundraiser, date to be determined. The football team will bus the tables and work at Sweets, and the football team will get all the tips for that night. And they're gonna set up a date for that. And then later, they're gonna do also a date for the volleyball team. So that's really cool that our local Sweets does that for our school. Alright, and then, under Personnel, Recommended Approvals is resignation of Roger Bacon, Special Education Teacher, effective June 29th, 2023, and resignation of Dennis White, Custodian, effective July 30th, 2023. Okay? Any questions? Alright, motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, discussion items. No policy review happens in July, so that's, that's amazing. Okay, donations. The Leroy Community Foundation donated $6,000 to the community education program to provide some type of lunch for the remainder of the summer. Now, it's not for every, it's not as inclusive as it was when this, when it was paid for federally, but they wanted there to be some type of food programs for the Cardinal kids and for the community at large. So they're having, you probably have seen on Facebook, they're having the Pizza Fridays. It's been really well attended. And so anyway, the Leroy Community Foundation gave $6,000 to help so that students could have some lunches during the remainder of the summer. And then, we'd also like to accept the donation of, this is big, you guys, $2,057 from the football bake sale and the raffle tickets. That was amazing. And so we're accepting the donation of $2,057 from the football bake sale to be put into the football activities account. Thank you for that. And then also, accept the donation of $6,655.58 from the Leroy Lions Club, and $655.58 from the Ostrander Lions Club, and that is to offset all overdue lunch accounts. So that should be all zeroed out and start the year fresh, and with the free lunches, that should put us all in good stead. So the Lions Clubs wanted to, again, as we've said many times, it takes the community, right? So this is a lot of generosity happening here, and we appreciate that very, very much. So we have to accept those, I guess we just accept, okay, we don't have to have a... We're just accepting the donations, we don't have to do a vote or anything on that?
No.
Yeah, so we're just publicly accepting and thanking and saying how very much we appreciate the donations. Alright. Now, C is the approval of the 2023-2024 school board meeting dates. That was sent to us. And I checked with Jen because I wasn't sure if the, in January, if the reorganization meeting could also be our business meeting, and yes, it can. So we just have to have that one date in January.
And please know, even though you're approving these, if we want to amend it, let's say you guys hit January, like, you know, maybe we should meet. As long as you give me three days advance notice, I'll post for you, within the year.
And I looked through the calendar, and they all look to be the third Tuesday. So, does anybody have any questions about that? Alrighty, so we need to, I need a motion for the approval of the school board meeting dates as sent to us by our superintendent.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. And second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Alright, opposed? Alright. So, do you want to say anything about this one?
Sure.
Okay, so, this one is said, says approval of setting the monetary threshold for the superintendent at $15,000.
Okay, so, when I came here a few years back, it was kind of hit and miss on what the threshold was with your superintendent. And, and that's relatively common in school districts, but I think it's, it's probably more common and best practice to set a threshold for me. The threshold is set at X amount of dollars for emergencies only. So for example, we're gonna be talking about it later tonight, if something would have happened with the crows in us, as an example, I have immediate approval of that amount of money, whichever, you know, however you'd like me to have that. My first year here, we set it at $25,000. To me, that was a little bit too much, and I, I never used it anyway. Last year when I was here, or the last two years, it's been set at $15,000. Again, have never used it. If I would, I would still come forward to the board for official approval, but it's more for an emergency situation. I'd like to keep it at that $15,000, just because we know everything has gone up in price and it's the just in case something would happen. Again, though, even if you would approve me to do this, I would still come forward to the board for official approval on something this size.
Okay, so I'd like to see a motion for the approval of setting the monetary threshold for the superintendent at $15,000.
I'll make a motion to set the threshold at $15,000.
Thank you, and second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So, we're going to do the approval of the first reading of a number of handbooks. They were sent to us, and they were also sent to us with a little, a little highlighting page of the changes. So I spent some time today going through these, and I've talked to Erin and Jen and Trevor. So in the elementary one, the only thing is there's just one little spelling error, so there's really no changes to the elementary one. I'll just, there was just a "us" instead of a "you", which I will take care of, or get to, you guys. And then when we move to the high school one, so in the elementary one, there is, it says, they changed a little bit about the hats, okay? And whether hats can be worn in school. And so in the elementary one, they, they have it reading, hats may not be worn except on special dress-up days or with the purchase of a hat pass. That's usually a fundraising-type activity. Okay, and then when we got to the high school one, they did not have that language in here. And we felt that was kind of confusing, and felt that in the, in the high school one, it says, no hats can be worn. But we thought it would be better to have this same language move over and be in the high school one as well. So the high school one will also say, hats may not be worn except on special dress-up days or with the purchase of a hat pass. So that, that change is gonna come with the second reading of these. Okay? And then, in the Activities Handbook, under Academic Eligibility, we got this little tiny paper of the changes that they wanted to have, and they wanted to change it. Instead of saying, at the end of the quarter, up failing grades, or any time it says "end of", they want, instead of saying "end of quarter", they want it to read "the end of semester". And they meant for that change to be, but it didn't trans, didn't get transferred over here. So we're gonna get that fixed up too, okay? Back of the handbook, I didn't see any changes that needed to be made. Emergency handbook, oh, the others, I didn't see any other changes. Did anybody have anything else they wanted to bring forward? Okay, so we're gonna go back. Approval of the first reading of the 2023-2024 student handbooks. That would be for both the elementary and the middle school, high school.
Yeah, but I think I have a question.
Yes, sir.
With the parent-student handbook, under the discipline plan, it looked like, you know, all that stuff, timeout, second timeout, detention, et cetera, et cetera, is being removed. What's the thought behind it?
We don't use that formula. We don't use that.
Is that a change with the RCD?
Yeah, but that, we, actually, that should have probably been taken out a couple years ago, because what you need to look at is the progressive discipline chart that's in there. Because that'll list out the, that'll list, that'll... Yeah, no, in the handbook, if you look under the progressive discipline, it has all the potential actions, and then underneath it has, it's into the consequences there. So it's in one spot there, and then with RCD, see, that really doesn't go along when, you know, it gets to the consequence part, because the whole point of RCD is get away from the consequences, work on relationships. But we want it, there are times for the consequences. That was just kind of outdated, and it probably should have been taken out before.
And in the, what he's referring to is in here, now there's this chain of command, instead of the, so rather than double...
Yeah. Yeah, we just, I got a lot of wording and a lot of word, and it's maybe confusing, so just...
Yeah, this, this is really clear-cut.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good question, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright, so any other questions in regard to the student handbooks? Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the first reading of the student handbooks.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. I'm sorry, did you say?
I'll say.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you, have passes. And then approval of the first reading of the Activities Handbook. And again, the one thing we're gonna change in there is change it from quarter, end of quarter results to end of semesters. And that change will be updated.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of the Activities Handbook.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of the first reading... Um, approval of the first reading of the twenty-three, twenty-four faculty handbook.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Dave?
A second.
Okay. Approval of the first reading of the twenty-three, twenty-four emergency handbook.
Just the point of order, Deb, we probably shouldn't have a vote on that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry about that. Thank you. Um, who's going along? Thank you very much. All in favor? So back on the approval of the first reading of the faculty handbook, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Um, approval of the first reading of the twenty-three, twenty-four emergency handbook. Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the emergency handbook first reading.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. I'll pass this as well. And then approval of the first reading of the 2023-24 pool employee handbook. Our motion to approve the employee handbook, pool employee handbook. Thank you.
Second.
Dave, is that you? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay. This.
Take him. There you go.
Um, this is the approval of the resolution approving ISB 499, long-term facility maintenance fiscal year twenty-five, long-term, ten, can the ten-year plan?
As a ten.
As a ten-year plan. Thank you.
Yep.
Um, so you want to talk about this?
It's crazy, right?
Yeah.
It's a long, um, resolution for you, but we do it every year. Um, as noted in your agenda, this is a statute. So every year, every school district in Minnesota must approve a resolution as related to long-term facilities maintenance. Deb, I believe you brought it up last month where some of this is health and safety stuff too. You may recall that from years past. Well, now they've added it all together. So each year we submit a pretty large document. You saw it, um, in your agenda that I sent, or the packet that I sent you. Um, but basically it all encompass, it encompasses all our building grounds and safety items that we currently have and are projecting to have. So I do send you on occasion and then our building and grounds folks get it often. But that colorful spreadsheet that I have, all of the things that we want to do versus what we have done kind of thing. Um, but there are things such as air quality, remodeling, health and safety, like asbestos or maybe exit signs or any kind of fire safety. Uh, there's ADA, so Americans with Disabilities Act requirements that we have to do. But that's all embedded in this spreadsheet that's in front of you. Um, and so that's why we developed the last couple of years this building grounds and safety committees. So we can really start projecting what are some things that we can do as a district or that we need to get done so we get funding for it. Um, and that's why we want to do this. So in front of you is also the long-term facilities maintenance, basically is the assurances, basically telling MDE, this is truly what we're going to be doing. Um, and yes, we can change in terms of, of maybe projects, but in terms of the money we're going to use, probably not so much. We want to keep that funding going, so we want our projects to keep going. Um, so tonight, so tonight I'm asking you, yes, it's a ten-year plan. And don't get me wrong, after this year it'll change again and it always does, especially with the projects. But today we do need an official resolution, so a roll call also has to happen. So. And please also note too, that once our building and grounds and safety committee meets in August, I'll have an updated, kind of more colorful spreadsheet, the one I always send you guys, with the capital, LTFN, all of that on it. That'll be updated again for you, so you'll get that again. And it, it does kind of relate to this.
Right. So. Okay. And so do I need to read this, you do?
Uh, you could. You could.
Pursuant to due call and notice thereof, a school board meeting of the independent school district number four ninety-nine, state of Minnesota, was held on July eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three at six o'clock PM for the purpose in part of approving the district's fiscal year twenty-five long-term facilities maintenance ten-year plan as established in Minnesota statutes twenty-twenty-one, section one-two-three B, point five-nine-five. Um, so now it says, school board member introduce the following resolution. So we have to, so we have to insert somebody into there? Okay. So we, in a, in a minute, we'll have.
I move, I move that we, uh, uh, pass this resolution, I guess.
All right. So, so I, but can I put, school member, school board member Dave Lunning?
Yes.
Okay. School board member Dave Lunning, introduce the following resolution and a move its adoption. Resolution adopting independent school district number four ninety-nine, fiscal year twenty-five, long-term facilities maintenance ten-year plan. Being resolved that the school board of the independent school district four ninety-nine, state of Minnesota, approves the attached fiscal year twenty-five, long-term facilities maintenance ten-year plan. The motion for the adoption of the foregoing resolution was duly seconded by school board member.
Second.
Thank you. Pat, our endorper. And then. All right. So now we have to do a roll call vote as to, um, the approval of this. Okay? So we're going to do a roll call vote. Pat?
Yes.
Dave Farlinger?
Yes.
Amanda Byrne?
Yeah.
Dave Lunning?
Yes.
Um, Angie Olson?
Yes.
And Kyle Stern?
Yes.
Deborah Yung?
Yes.
So, and then the vote against? Whereupon the resolution was declared duly passed and adopted on the eighteenth day of July, twenty-twenty-three. And the school board clerk will have to sign this, but do we want to type up a one with all these names in there?
We can take yours, just like that.
Okay. Do I need to write everybody's? I'll write that down.
That's fine. Take your time.
And then school board clerk, that's you, so I'll get you to sign that. Okay. All right. Oh, I see. It was on here. Can I use this? Okay. We did it. We got it done. Um, so now we are ready to do the discussion on the crow's nest.
All right. I'll be getting, but I'm going to need some help because I, I missed a meeting on Friday for that. Um, while as, as all of you have read, I, I, I was a little stressed. You can probably tell in my email. Like, what are we going to do? We have a fall season coming up. I was a little concerned. Uh, so what had happened was we had our bleacher inspection. Um, so we have that new nice rotation now to get our bleachers inspected. Um, so the bleacher guy came in, was showing signs of some concerns related to our crow's nest. Um, did stick, highly suggest that we bring an engineer to look at its stability. So we did have an engineer come in and he did suggest that it was pretty unstable, would recommend either a new crow's nest or something different, um, but was not willing to sign off on anything at this point. Um, but things have changed and evolved in a good way since then, I believe. And so this is where I'm going to hand it off to actually Dave Lunning and Erin. But I have to also thank Kyle for being a part of subcommittees when we're dealing with these kind of issues. And it's been really great and kind of eye-opening too. But on Friday, Erin and Dave, um, were at a meeting. And so Dave, can I?
So there was a committee meeting while I was, while I was gone last week. I don't know who suggested TJ Federley, but it was a good idea. Anyway. So a guy from that company from Spring Valley came down and wrote down, he said, this thing is, there's nothing wrong with this thing. This is fine. And we talked about some, some, uh, ways of reinforcing it a little bit more. Actually, the only thing that moves or wobbles is the first flight of steps that goes up there. And he suggested a couple, uh, small, really inexpensive ways of stabilizing that. So, uh, he and another representative from his company are going to show up sometime this week. And I don't think that they've made an appointment to just show up that I know of.
Not that I'm aware of yet.
So to take some measurements and actually write something up for us so that, uh, our bugs will be covered basically.
We'll have some documentation because I found Noel and Erin hasn't either any documentation from the first crow's nest.
Mm-hmm.
We talked about some reinforcement that. So one of the things our committee has been talking about is that concession stand building is getting kind of in bad shape. I mean, cement board is in terrible shape. And talking about replacing that or updating that or, you know, something. And, uh, so in our conversation with this gentleman from Federley, we talked about possibly, uh, enclosing the bottom part of that crow's nest and maybe making that concession stand area. So when he comes back this time, we're going to be talking about, you know, what we're going to do for now with looking forward to possibly turning that into a concession stand. So. And then the other building will be either storage or just dumpster. Anything else to add to that, Erin?
No. He already said if we enclose that bottom, that would really shore up the, the structure as well. Should we add the walls and stuff on the bottom of it? So it seemed like a smart idea.
We already have electricity going to the crow's nest, right? So that matters.
So the first guy, the engineer that you mentioned, had suggested that we tear it down and put a steel-supported structure up there. It's like, have any of you guys ever seen a steel? Beams on the crow's nest in these schools outside of town? I haven't.
Aaron's got to sit on the roof or something.
Yeah, right. That's okay.
I'm the expert. I get a plan of all. He did say ours was probably the best shape he's ever seen.
Yeah.
Of crow's nest. So it's kind of reassuring.
So I think the first guy was maybe, um, looking for something that would maybe serve his needs better than, I mean, he wanted nine thousand dollars to build your own. So more than what would serve my needs. So I think we're, we just, like I told Jen, she was in a panic.
I was in a panic.
And so we just need to relax, step back a little bit and just use some common sense.
And you know when a man says that to a woman, it comes over really quickly. Right?
My, my wife loves it. She hears that.
Thanks, Steve. Appreciate that.
And he's going to look at, and he's going to look at finishing it.
Yes. Yeah, they were looking at windows too, because water's leaking in there and it's not a good situation. So, so with the threshold that you approved tonight, this could relate to this as an example. Once he comes in, gives us kind of that quote or a bid, um, what he's thinking to stabilize, I'll let you guys know right away, unlikely to reach that threshold, but we'll probably.
The other thing that I asked him is can all these materials be purchased locally from, from the local area? And he said absolutely. And it's, that's what we like to do as well. Anyway, so. Because I did talk to Jim after Jen told us that, you know, first engineer came. And so he had mentioned that he was a little upset when that thing was built because they used the atoms lumber.
Well, it was created from atoms. Those whiskeys that they were.
Yeah. So, so this way that'll help, uh, you know, to keep them around here too.
Okay. So do we need to do any?
If I can get a, a motion to basically support the efforts of.
Stabilize.
Stabilizing essentially. Yeah. Do a little bit of construction on it to make sure it's stabilized.
We don't have a dollar figure yet.
We don't right now.
We don't know anything yet, so.
We don't.
You just keep moving forward.
Yes.
Right at that volume.
Yep. Yep.
Um, so I would like to make a motion that we keep moving forward on stabilizing the crow's nest for this fall season.
I'll make a motion to continue the moving the crow's nest. Stay in the station.
Okay. Great. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So, school board committees. Um. I did the, I did the ECFE report last month and we don't have anything new to share with that. Meeting confer has not met. We are meeting, we have a date set, um, in September and right after school gets going. Um, MSBA, anything?
Um, this, this week and next week, there's a couple of webinars.
Oh.
Coming up. Um, Thursday, the twentieth, the one o'clock, there's a legislative impact from this past session that, uh, it'll show the, the updates and, and the impacts of that. And then the twenty-seventh, next week, from one to two, there's a webinar uh, for school finance changes with the legislative changes.
Great. Thank you.
This is the second one they've done on legislative impact because I've watched one of those.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Dave. And I'm still taking state high school league. Anything new on that?
Nope.
Okay. Uh, scholarships, we kind of took care of last month. Certified negotiations.
Uh, we met tonight, um, just before the meeting. Things are progressing, um, slowly progressing. So we'll be meeting again as a committee this Thursday and, uh, meeting again with the teachers next week.
Okay. Thank you. Um, non-certified negotiations is not happening right now. Um, SMAC, anything new on that?
Nothing new.
Okay. Um, policy review, we did not have this time. World's Best Workforce, you're going to meet in November. Buildings and grounds.
We need to just move.
We'll be in August.
Meet in August.
Crow's nest is going to have a fire burning right now.
Okay. And Marquand Collaborative, I don't have anything new to report on that. Okay?
Back to the building and grounds, I think Jen, if you would send everyone, when we get a, a quota.
Yep. For sure.
That would be great. And then we all know about it, at least. If anybody has any issues, they can just bring them up with that.
Yeah.
Are we going to have them just, uh, stable, stabilize it for now? And then another look at, are they closing at all? Rather than having them come back or?
Part of the stabilizing would be enclosing it.
Oh, that's, okay.
That's what we're talking about.
All right. So we're going to do.
And doing it as looking forward to it.
Right.
But even yet this year?
Yeah. I mean, the, the, the reinforcement would be enclosing.
Okay.
So it might just be with treated plywood. It might be with nailers and steel, you know? Let's yet to be determined, I guess.
Okay. And then something on that bottom says steps. And then what kind of, there's just crunch rock over there, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So you can always put this in.
Even if it's enclosed?
Yeah.
Okay. Fantastic. Um, so our next school board meeting is August fifteenth. Staff development day is our August twenty-eighth through the thirtieth. September fourth holiday for Labor Day. Middle school, high school starts September fifth. Uh, elementary, they have teacher conferences the first two days and then they start coming to school on the seventh. Mid-quarter MEA, staff development. It's all good. All right. Motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
All right. It is done. Six fifty-two. Thank you very much.